To hear public comments regarding a request by Footbridge Partners. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular subject? Anyone? Anyone?
Move to close the hearing.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion's carried. We've got about five minutes and we'll start our regular meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, by the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Court, take the roll, please.
Mayor Rowe.
Here.
District one, Morissette.
Here.
Two, O'Connell.
Here.
Three, Rodomacher.
Here.
Four, Wyland.
Here.
Five, O'Malley.
Here.
Six, Virchell.
Here.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present for any item not on the agenda. But before we do that, we have a Red Ribbon Week and Stephen Dolly will read the proclamation. Are you the president?
Yes. Um, well, this is last year's. I love a new one.
We don't want last year's president. Why don't you, all you people, get up there so that you're on TV and everybody can see. All right.
Oh, my gosh. The proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. Whereas the use of tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs is a great concern to society, and whereas the Hudson School District and local chapter of Students Against Destructive Decisions provide educational programs for students urging them to support and live a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas Community Action Incorporated provides needed services for families and teens in the area and supports programs for the prevention and rehabilitation of drug and alcohol abusers, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Week was originally proclaimed in 1988 by the U.S. Congress and marked by the wearing of a red ribbon to send the message, "Live Drug Free." And whereas the Hudson School District, SAD, Community Action, and the St. Croix Underage Drinking Coalition have joined in sponsoring the local red ribbon campaign and annual Red Ribbon 5K Walk or Run event to be held Saturday, October 20th, 2007. Now therefore, I, Stephen Dolly, along with Mayor Jack Rowe of Hudson, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim October 20th to 27th of 2007 as the official Red Ribbon Week in the city of Hudson, and urge all families and students to observe the campaign by supporting the red ribbon events, by wearing red ribbons, and by avoiding leaves of tobacco, drugs, and alcohol.
All right, let's give them a hand. I'm usually there for your 5K kickoff and I'll be there this year as well. October 20th, 9:00 a.m., Hudson High School. Anyone else like to address the council at this point? Anyone? Okay, hearing done, let's go to the consent agenda items. And Madam Clerk will verbalize those for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of October 1st, 2007. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $782,928.24. The detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of three regular operators licenses for the period October 16th, 2007 through June 30th, 2009. Additional information is available on request. To approve the request of Students Against Destructive Decisions to conduct the fifth annual Red Ribbon Week 5K Walk Run on Saturday, October 20th, 2007, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., beginning and ending at Hudson Middle School with the requirement that adult monitors wear safety vests and/or handheld stop signs are posted at intersections for traffic control and participant safety. To deny the request to block Third Street between St. Croix Street and Orange Street and to approve no parking on Third Street from Orange Street to St. Croix Street on October 31st, 2007, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. To approve the request of Willow River Elementary School for two signs to be placed on the northeast corner of Oak Street indicating minibus parking only, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., with sign costs to be paid by the school district. To approve the annual light-up night event on Second Street from 6:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Friday, November 23rd, 2007, with traffic detoured to First Street or Third Streets. To approve the annual hot air affair event to be held February 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, 2008, including the balloon launches, fireworks, moon glow, and torchlight parade to be held on Second Street with restricted parking on Third Street and in the North Parking Lot and North Plaza Parking Lot for parade participants. To place on file the quarterly report of the Fire Department and the Public Utility Commission minutes of October 9th, 2007, and the joint, the advisory joint fire board minutes of September 24th, 2007, and the joint plan commission and common council minutes of September 20th, 2007. That is all.
That is your pledge here on the consent. Move to approve.
Second.
We'll call the vote, please.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Rodomacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Let's go to Plan Commission, final development plans for Washington County Minnesota radio antenna and equipment on Hanley Road Water Tower east of Hagan Street and north of Hanley Road, and Denny's going to give us some enlightenment on that.
The Plan Commission recommendation is to approve, recommends approval of the final development plans for the Washington County Radio Antenna Equipment Project to be located on Hanley Road Water Tower site with the following conditions. A, the detail of the eight-inch conduit penetrations in the base must be revised to provide structural integrity. B, exact location of antennae must be shown, including cable routing. And C, landscape plans be reviewed, approved by the community development director. Mr. Steve Pot from Washington County is here tonight to discuss their proposal if there's any particular questions pertaining to the plans that were submitted for approval.
Counsel, do I have any questions of Denny at this time?
I have a question, Mr. Pot.
Okay. He's here.
You bet.
Mr. Pot, hi, I'm Scott O'Malley. You're going to have a parabolic mounted along with these antennas, is that correct?
Yes, one.
Six-foot?
That's up in the area, it'll either be four or six. Minimum of four, maximum of six.
Okay. Which direction will be facing? Washington, towards Washington County?
Toward the government center. That particular hop is going to go to the...
The St. Croix Government Center?
The Washington County.
Washington County Government Center.
Yeah, up in Stillwater.
Okay.
So it's what, north, northwest?
Facing...
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, that's the one thing that will probably, that people will notice most, I'm guessing. But a four-footer won't be too bad. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Move to approve with the conditions that Denny has enumerated.
For a sec. Discussion, hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motions carried. Let's go to Finance. Denny, you might want to stay up there, consider authorizing Carmichael Road Vine Street Corridor Traffic Analysis by Bonner Strew with funding from Comprehensive Plan Budget. Recommendation from Finance is to do exactly that, but Denny had some alternate approach there?
Well, yeah, I mean, the funding source would be the Comprehensive Plan Fund. Catherine mentioned to me where the private sector may be willing or able to help fund that. When petitions for annexation are now made, there's a $4,000 application fee that is intended to be used for reviews of this type or other staff reviews. So I would suggest is that the funding would be intended to be taken out of the Comprehensive Fund at the end of the program. If we have some of those funds left over from the application fee, that those funds would be used to pay for portions of this versus the Comprehensive Plan Fund, because I mean, a tenth of those funds is to pay for reviews of the annexation. So that would be a second source that we potentially could go to to have this study funded.
Good suggestion, Catherine, thank you very much. Need a motion?
Move to approve.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion or comments?
Yeah, I had one question of Boren Fonsstrow. In this traffic study, what, I mean, what kind of detail are you going to come back with as far as traffic volumes, suggestions for stoplights, suggestions for stop signs? I mean, how deep does this analysis go?
Well, you know, it's, feel free to jump in here.
Go ahead.
You know, it's planning level, so, you know, we'll make some assumptions on how the area's going to ultimately develop and, you know, develop planning level costs and, you know, a concept plan of the turn lanes and those sorts of things.
Well, there'd be, typically, there's a analysis of the peak hour traffic both morning and afternoon. So that information will be, because that's really what dictates as far as light and regulation of any intersections. Also, you know, the general amount of traffic. One would be the section of the roadway that's being proposed and what the costs are. Now, as far as all the costs for lighting, the only, well, the only assumption we've made at this time as far as intersections may be lighted would be the most southerly intersection. The others, at least at this time, have not been proposed to be regulated in that way, but that's something that would be reviewed and if that is proposed, if the traffic warrants are high enough to warrant lighting on those intersections, then we'd come back with cost estimates on those.
Yeah, because what I was hoping we'd be hearing is that based on these traffic volumes, we suggest that this becomes a stop sign, that becomes a stop light, you know, whatever that, the volumes would analyze each corner to say what to do with that corner.
Well, we can, you're wanting it on Vine Street and Carmichael, correct?
Well, that's what I heard, and I just want to make sure that my assumption is correct, that that's what we're going to see.
We'll build that into the, we'll build that into the program.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion's carried. Next item, a request to transfer Police Department unused payroll funds to capital outlay for equipment. Recommendation from Finance is to okay the overtime for a total of $17,500.
So moved.
For a second? Discussion.
I have a question. This, looking at the types of things we're talking about purchasing here, you talk about purchasing body armor and photographic equipment, but didn't we also say that we needed computers and squad cars and some other things that...
We're recommending that we take the overtime at this particular...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
We have a motion, a second?
Well, I want to be clear, is the motion just for that or we also have to discuss the equipment as well in a separate motion?
Well, I will clarify my motion again. I will move, as I did in Finance, that we approve $17,500 to cover the overtime for patrol and investigative. We want our officers to be paid. The $41,930 for equipment purchases is sufficiently vague and actually should go through the capital outlay process. That I don't think it's, this is the proper venue for us to handle that. And also, we don't even really know what we're buying, there's no list of equipment. I don't know how we could approve that. So I've, again, moved to approve the $17,500 for payment to our officers, and that is it.
Is there a second?
I did.
Yes. Also, there wasn't any clarification on IT time to put these into application. Okay.
I guess I will keep that as long as we can come back with a more detailed list at the next meeting, because I'd like to...
Absolutely, I can break it down.
We're technologically deficient in this department and we've got some money here that we can address some of those issues.
Bring that information to me. Yes, sir.
I'd like to see the...
I, you know, I would like to make a comment on that. I'm not arguing with you, Paul, but, and to say that, and to say that we have money available, when the budgeting process so far, as our committee, Public Works, the budgeting process has taught us, we don't have money available. And I am loath to talk about spending money as though, well, we've got it anyway, because we don't have it anyway. As you can see before you, you have a summary of the budget requests for next year, and interim chief Atkinson's asking for almost a million dollars more than the current budget, a 29% increase. I don't think we have any money to spare. Now, I realize this is a discussion we can easily have next time, and I welcome that, but I think we need to frame it in terms of, we do not need to frame it in terms of, well, we've got the money available anyway.
Let's take a look at it and we'll determine whether or not it, where it goes.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay?
Did we vote on that?
We did not. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion's carried. Thank you. Core Mate Systems of Minnesota, an appointment of an agent for Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, 2201 Cooley Road. Recommendation from Finance is to approve that. Need a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion's carried. Number seven, Hudson Spirits LLC, change of agent for Buffalo Wild Wings Grill and Bar, 913 Pearson Drive, and review the location of alcoholic beverage storage and servicing areas. That's been done according to the clerk, and so recommendation is to approve that.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion's carried. We did have a 2008 budget summary. Everybody get a copy of that and maybe you would like to give us the highlights in the world of finance.
The budget requests are in from all the departments, and we don't have the cuts yet, as all the committees are still meeting and coming up with what's essential. But the original request came in at $8.2 million, which is about $1.4 million increase over last year's budget. With our revenue, we're projecting, if the state would allow us to do our growth, which would be the 2.7%, we have about 106,000 of additional tax revenue. So we have about $1.3 million to cut from the budget in order to balance. So we have quite a bit of work to do yet. Hopefully, in the next week or so, we'll know what the state's going to do, and until they actually give us direction, we really, you know, will work on the overages right now, but we don't know what to do at this point, so.
Well, if they come in at 2.5% from Madison, you're saying that we're $1,356,000 over what we can handle.
This is operations only, it does not include any capital outlay.
Yeah, we have to separate capital projects and take a different approach with that. Okay, let's go to Public Works Committee, dates for fall leaf collection program.
I'd like to announce once again that this fall, we will have free leaf drop-off and cut grass. It has to be bagged in bags, please, smaller than 90 gallons. If you've done this before, you know that you have to throw them up into the dumpsters, and if it's bigger than a 90-gallon bag, you're going to certainly have a difficulty, no matter how strong you are. And it is for leaves and cut grass only. Please, no tree limbs, no old tires or kitchen appliances, and after Thanksgiving, please, no decaying pumpkins.
No pumpkins.
They weigh a ton, and they're not covered by our contract with Riverside, who picks all of this up for us. If you're unable to get to the West End Garage, which is where our usual drop-off point is, and if you're new to Hudson, the West End Garage is simply, get on Second Street as though you're going to go to North Hudson. Before you get to Lake Malibu, two blocks before, turn left, and it leads you directly to the West End Garage. The provision, if you're not able to get to the West End Garage, is that you can call Violia, your normal refuse handler, and make an appointment for them to pick it up at Curbside. The tickets are discounted to $1 each and can be obtained either here at City Hall, or at Econo Foods up on the hill, or at County Market. For those who are unable to do either of those two things, and if you live in the 5th District, just call me. We've done this for about, I think this is our 11th year, that my friends and I will pick up your bags and carry them for you. The hours are these. This Saturday, it begins October 20th from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and runs for three successive Saturdays. In the intervening two weeks, it will be open Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from noon to 7:00 p.m., and someone will be on duty to help you if you have an unusually large number of bags.
Thank you for that short summary. Let's go to Public Safety Committee, item six, replacement and funding for emergency siren poles and sharing emergency warning computer system with St. Croix County Communications Center. I understand that there's going to be an allocation for $25,000 for steel poles, is that correct?
That's what Public Works has been talking about, because it's our purview to replace these poles. We have been using wooden poles, which in the past have been actually donated by Excel Energy, which is very kind of them. But even though they are creosote-soaked poles, it hasn't stopped the insects, particularly the woodpeckers who go after the insects. We've got some pretty substantial holes, which are weakening these poles. We're looking right now into the possibility of replacement with steel, which will cost about $25,000, or if possibly Excel still has some more wooden poles. They last about a decade, and I think the cost-benefit analysis would come down on the side of using the wooden poles. The only thing that we have to worry about is the decibel level is such, it's 104, it's very, very high, that the poles must be high enough to get those sirens far enough off the ground so nobody in the immediate vicinity becomes deafened.
I did call Trudy Polkenhagen today, she's looking to see if there's any available. Is there money in the budget for this 25,000 allocation for steel?
It's a request of 2008.
Oh, okay. So we still have time to make that decision.
We still have time, so this is for information only at this point. We're still pursuing.
Very good.
Were the wooden poles tall enough? That was one discussion.
We have to determine that. Ms. Polkenhagen is going to check out what they have.
Okay. So they do have some taller?
She thinks they do have some taller ones, but we don't know that for a fact yet.
She's checking on it. Okay, let's go to unfinished business, update on projects.
Yes, good evening. Quite a bit of progress is made this last couple of weeks on the various improvement projects around town. We did receive the core permit for the wall project, and they plan on starting tomorrow.
And let's make sure that if we're in communication with any of the DNR people that are working on this, thank them for their quick response, and we do have an individual who lives here in Hudson, correct?
Yeah.
The name slips me, but we probably should, and if you so desire, we'll write him a note of thanks that he did pick that up in such a fast fashion, but that's really good news, because we can proceed with that wall, as you're going to point out in just a minute, right?
Yes, and then just for one point of clarification, this was a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, they fast-tracked for us and got that through.
Can you give me that individual's name, the one that resides in Hudson? I'd like to...
Yeah, I'll have to track it down, I don't...
Thank you.
The gentleman, the two gentlemen that we were working with at the core word, Dan Seaman and Andy Bodett, they're the, they were the two that processed that very quickly. And then also, Anai Aldrich, we have that paved, all that remains in that project is restoration, so you should see that later this week or into early next week, and Excel has some restoration too, as they replace some gas lines.
Are we hearing any complaints from the people along that street?
You know, for the most part, it's been rather, you know, free of complaints. There was one concern about a driveway, you know, they did what we asked in regards to moving back their dog fence, their invisible fence there, but in the course of removing their concrete apron, we did break it underneath their pavement, and the break happened a little bit further underneath the pavement, and so we did have to, and he had a brand-new driveway too, so unfortunately, we had to cut back and give them a little bit larger apron.
Okay.
But, you know, we did work through that issue. Doing our best.
Great, thanks.
And then also, we do have, the Carmichael Road Crestview Drive has been paved now, but the weather is such that it's holding up the painting of it, and there's also some lead time on that big mast.
Do we have a second layer on there already?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do.
And what's going to happen tomorrow is we're going to temporarily tape, so we can open that up.
I was surprised when everything was, when the lights were out of commission, everybody was so polite. It actually seemed like it was working better than when we had the lights.
Yes. But it will work even better once we get it all opened up.
Looks great.
And then, Cooley Road and 11th there too, that's moving along, and we should be seeing that turn lane paved later this week.
Okay. Any other questions, Chuck, on any of the, we want to thank you for accelerating that and the good job you've done, and thank you.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to make one other note here that I will not, I cannot attend your next meeting, and so if my presence is needed, then we'll have to figure out a proxy.
Do you have a second quarterback that is going to appear, or what?
My assistant, Dennis Poser.
I'll give him a call.
Okay.
Thank you. Update on health insurance.
We received all of the employees' health information forms back. We have all of one of the annuities back.
Great.
Deadline is September 25th at noon, which is a Thursday.
October.
Sorry, September, yeah. October 25th at noon, that afternoon, we will get the information, whatever we have out to the union representatives, so they have the opportunity over the weekend to review whatever they need to review. We will also put together the financial end of it, so that's available. We will be looking likely at a special meeting, either sometime morning, evening of the 30th or morning of the 31st. So Jan will be in touch with all of you to find out what your schedules are. We figure the evening of the 31st would be difficult.
Well, the state deadline is the 31st, isn't it?
Well, right, correct. I mean, theoretically, the facts could go out, but we just thought with being that it is a church, well, church evening, it's also Halloween, so we'll shoot for either the morning or the evening of the 30th or the morning of the 31st, so if you could check your schedules, and Jan will be in touch. You know, they're working at getting us quotes, you know, we'll know on the 25th what came in, and so.
Any questions on that? Any comments that that committee would like to make?
I'd like to thank Devon for doing a good job of quarterbacking it. I think he's done a real good job, so thank you.
As I told Al earlier today, I now know more about health insurance than ever thought I would.
Well, gives us a shot.
Yep.
So.
Good job. Okay, let's go to C, combining wards and using three polling places for election ordinance, number 14-07. You want to give us the highlights of that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we're in need of a polling place, an additional polling place due to the large number of registered voters, and the Methodist Church has indicated that they're interested in helping out in that way. So it would be Districts 3 and 4 that would move to the new place, and the other districts would stay in the places that they're already at. So it would be 1 and 5 here at City Hall, and 2 and 6 at the government center. Do you have any questions?
Will we be putting this on our internet?
Yeah, there'll be a notice, and then the people that are affected by the change will be getting a postcard to notify them for the next upcoming elections where they should go.
Move to adopt ordinance 14-07.
Do we have to suspend the rules?
No, we've already had first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
I wasn't here. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
I think it bears repeating that the church was kind enough to donate this space to us and not accept, not, even though we offered some remuneration, to not accept it. I think that's very generous of them.
They must have been watching our budget situation. Yes.
They also are providing us with a storage area for some, you know, the things that, so we don't have to haul everything back and forth.
Well, that's terrific.
So, I mean, it won't be a large area, but some of the stuff that's kind of cumbersome, they've offered to do that to.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion's carried. Let's go to new business, consider rezoning River River Professional Center at 1200 Oxford Street from I-1 Light Industrial to B-2 General Business District, ordinance number 15-07.
Let me clue myself from this discussion.
Okay.
There are no public input either at the Plan Commission or the public hearing held earlier tonight. There's been no readings of this ordinance to date, so this would be your first reading, or your choice could be suspend the rules and go to a second reading.
I'll move for first reading.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I would actually argue for processing this, because it has been before the Plan Commission. It has been, we've had a public hearing on this at the full council. I think there's no reason to hold it up any further. There has been not a single murmur of...
Or no comments, sorry.
Yeah, of problems with it.
Is there any reason why we couldn't approve it in two weeks? Is that a problem for anyone else?
Well, Denny, is timing...
I haven't heard that this is a timing issue, that the first reading tonight would be acceptable and bring it back in two weeks. I was mentioning, you do have the alternative of going to second reading tonight.
Well, in that case, I would...
We have a motion and a second, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, nope. Motion's carried. Easement agreement with Timothy Stewart, 1708 Stone Pine Circle to construct a fence with a utility easement area. David Gray is going to give us the highlights there.
Good evening. Like Jack said, there's a, there's a request for an easement agreement from Timothy Stewart. He's looking to purchase the home at 1708 Stone Pine Circle. The Stewart family has a number of children, and the fact that the property is adjacent to Grandview Drive, they're hoping to construct a fence along Grandview Drive. One thing that has occurred since, since you've received my issue sheet is the fact that they would like to continue to put the ornamental fence along Grandview Drive but substitute a three-rail split fence along the other property lines. I guess personally, I don't see that as an issue with our fence ordinance, but I just want to make, make the council aware of that. I guess I'm recommending approval of the easement agreement.
Okay. Any questions of that recommendation?
David, if I remember correctly, the easement agreement calls for the property owners to foot the cost of any changes that need to be made per the city's request. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'll move for approval.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you much, David. Are we going to have a closed session? Probably not, huh?
Yeah, I think there's a...
Okay, all right. The other ones that we have, I have an appointment with the Police and Fire Commission. Would you pass these out, please? Frank Rhodes recently resigned from the Police and Fire Commission. Attached is his letter of 10-307 attached. I'd like to have you confirm the appointment of Tom Redner, 714 Wisconsin Street, to fill the remainder of Mr. Rhodes' term in the Police and Fire Commission through April of 2011.
Move to approve the appointment of Tom Redner.
Second.
I think Tom will give us some input and leadership on Police and Fire Commission that is much needed. There's a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Motion's carried. And we covered everything. Everything but closed session, right?
Right.
Need a motion to go into close.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Rodamacher? Burchill?
Yes.
Morsett?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Motion's carried, would take a couple of minutes to clear the...